City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded August 19, 2024.
All righty. I have seven o'clock. We'll call the regular meeting of the City of Stevens Point's Common Council to order. Clerk, could I please get a roll call?
Christensen.
Here.
Guthrie.
Here.
Keimer.
Here.
Broderick.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Steinmetz.
Here.
Nivone.
Here.
Shuda.
Here.
Lang.
Here.
Boozy.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
And everyone who's present, please join me for our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for joining us tonight. As I mentioned, the overflow room is not open. It's still set up as a studio, and unless we need it, we'll just keep that set up as a studio. So it's good to see everybody's faces, anyway. I'll keep my remarks short. As I said, the budget process is well in order. The comptroller and I have been working on both the capital budget and the operational budget worksheets have been sent out over the next couple of weeks. We'll be meeting with the department heads to see where we can make things kind of jive and balance, and we'll be presenting the budget very shortly. First, we do the operational -- or I'm sorry, first we do the capital budget, and then we'll do the operational budget, just in time for Corey to send out his departmental Christmas cards in the form of a tax bill. All righty. So one other thing I forgot, and I almost let this one slip by. So Carrie Entor is our city clerk, and rather than spending time with her husband on their 35th wedding anniversary today, she chose to spend it with us. This is a choice. So congratulations, Carrie, on 35 years. And it's my understanding that your work with the city is also celebrating an anniversary shortly. It was the Monday after your wedding that you started?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Fair enough. So again, congratulations. Item number three is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on an item other than a specified item on the agenda should register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during the public hearing are not required to register ahead of time, and there are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. So if there's anyone that hasn't registered yet, Bethany has the slips over there. Bethany, do you have any -- anyone signed up? We do? Okay, great. Anyone that wants to speak but did not sign up? Thanks, Hannah. All righty. Then we'll move on to item number four. That's persons who wish to address the mayor and the common council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item, and the first one we will go to is alderperson Mary Nivone.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would personally like to thank Ryan Kornoski for everything he's done for the city, but mostly for those urban planner moments that we've shared over the years. It's been very meaningful for me. I see, in fact, that Ryan's position, the Community Development Director, has already been posted on the city website. As the Personnel Committee Chair, I believe this has been posted prematurely. This body has just begun to explore how the city might or might not be restructured going forward. Please remember, changing nothing is a viable option. However, the Community Development Director position might play a role in any reorganization plan this council might choose to consider. I will say again here that this is not about any one person, but rather about how we place the city on its most solid and competitive ground going forward. I believe that filling the Community Development Director position too quickly will not allow this body time to consider all the available options. We could designate interim supervisors within the department in the short term while the council chooses which way to go forward. And a little preview for the Personnel Committee, I'm going to request that a presentation by Director Kornoski be placed on the agenda to discuss just exactly what a city manager form, a city administrator form, and a mayor/council form of government look like, so we all are on the same page and we all know what we're talking about. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. And Andrea Olson.
Hi, Andrea Olson, 410 Franklin Street, and I have two things I want to speak about. I am all for investigating the city administrator position, and I do not think that this will be brought up randomly by our council. This is something that was probably thought about for a while due to things that are happening that the public isn't privy to, probably some HR stuff, and because we've had a lot of staff firings, people leaving, Alders leaving because they felt like they were bullied, or that being somewhat part of the reason why they were leaving. And I have personally been told that I should be more like a man on Facebook during business hours, too. Guy that I am very good friends with, but still. I was also had somebody encourage at 60 years old to document me to the point that I felt like I was being stalked, and the police department had already told me that there was nothing going on, nothing was wrong, and then that ended up being a case for the zoning board of appeals. And then the mayor himself pretended like he didn't know anything about it in an email response to my response there. But this isn't something new. We've like, we've seen how our city functions right now and what it could be. Plover functions properly right now with the city administrator. We need somebody that is very experienced, that's not going to turn over every four years, that's just working for votes and playing sides against each other. So that's why I think a third party should definitely be hired, because we need to not have any more elbow rubbing and things like that. Also, I think that I have streets improvement projects. I'd like to have the city pay special attention to holding contractors liable for what they are doing. When the grass was replaced in 2021, it was replaced with tons of invasive plants that are horrible to try to pull out right now, and that is actually illegal to be planting them. And also making sure that projects are done properly and not leaving buildings out of code compliance, and then forcing the owner of the building to bring that building up to current codes when it's not code compliant because the work was not done to the specifications in the plans. And then the plans were actually not appropriate in the first place, too, because of the grading that was done. Because right now, I'm in a situation where I am being told that I have to pay and figure out how to fix the city's problems on the city-owned property. So it's just, this can happen to many people. It seems like a lot of these cases are just always denied, denied, and then you end up having to invest $20,000 just to try to fix a building that has mold in it because water's been going into the walls. But they don't check to make sure if building codes are compliant, and it's just too bad.
Thank you. That exhausts the speaker list. Up next, we have a presentation. This came at the request of Alder Keimer. We have Michelle Gullickson, who's joined by Dave Barbeer from the UWSP Office of Sustainability and UWSP's Climate Action and Resilience Planning. Give me two seconds to share your presentation with the online viewers. And let's move this down here. And Michelle, take it away.
All right, sounds great. Hi, folks. I'm Michelle. This is Dave Barbeer. We're both representing the Office of Sustainability at the University of Wisconsin-Stevens Point. You can go ahead and advance the slide. So I am a doctoral researcher, part of the Educational Sustainability EDD program here at UWSP, and I'm working on the Climate Action Resiliency Plan for the university. We wanted to talk to you so that you're aware of, you know, what we've been doing and how you may be able to get involved. We also wanted to just raise your awareness of climate action planning just in general, as it may be a topic that's of interest to the council as well. One thing to say is that Dave and I, you know, wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be working on the climate action plan without the support of our staff, which is pictured here. Dave's dog doesn't contribute a lot.
But does contribute.
Peripherally, absolutely.
Emotionals.
Exactly. He's keeping Dave together. But we also want to be really clear that we've had a really good relationship with leadership throughout this process as well. So Chancellor Gibson and the vice chancellors have been really good champions for this project as well, and we do just want to like acknowledge that within our journey, that having that leadership buy-in has been huge for us. You can go to the next slide. So we've also had the support of folks who are working on our working groups for this project. So I'm going to talk a little bit more soon about what climate action resiliency planning kind of entails, but all of these working group areas are a part of what we're discussing. And so we had a large stakeholder meeting in February, and we have people who attended that meeting and are interested in continuing to work on the project. These are people from like the university, so faculty, staff, students, and also people from the community as well. I mean, you can advance the slide. So what is a climate action resilience plan? How did this project kind of come about? So at this point, UW-Stevens Point has signed two commitments with a nonprofit called Second Nature. The first commitment that we signed was back in 2007, and that was the carbon commitment. So by signing that commitment, we pledged to create a plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And since signing that plan, and it was published in 2011, the university has reduced greenhouse gas emissions by 34%. So then, when we signed the climate commitment in December of 2023, Chancellor Gibson signed that more recently, we pledged to continue that work with emissions reduction, as well as build in a resilience assessment component to our plan, and I'll talk about like what that means. But essentially, the resilience piece is asking us to look at climate action from a broader perspective, including social systems, economic systems, and larger environmental systems as well. One thing also to note about this slide, it is a couple of years old, but all the dots are universities who are involved in these types of plans. So that's just to show and to say that there's a lot of like momentum building around this type of thing. So you can go to the next slide. Perfect. A little bit of the why, you know, why do climate action planning? Why invest so much time into it? This is just a visual representation of the increase in the average temperatures in March from 2005 to 2024. I think a lot of us are, you know, noticing these changes, but it is kind of helpful to ground ourselves in the data and sort of, you know, reemphasize the why and why we're doing this, because we know the average temperature doesn't just affect one thing. It affects our environment, agriculture, economy, culture, safety, everything like that. So you can go ahead to the next slide. So with the climate action piece of a climate action plan, we're mostly looking at the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. There, in the like greenhouse gas reduction world, there's scope 1, 2, 3 emissions. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on that, but a couple of things that I just want to point out that you're looking at here. One, like the blue line, kind of second to the bottom, you can see a drop down in 2020. So that emissions line includes like travel emissions. So obviously, with COVID being less travel, we did see like a pretty big drop in those emissions. And then you can see the green line that goes all the way down to zero, and that is a scope emissions that would include like purchased electricity, like through utilities. And so what UW-Stevens Point has been doing is purchasing like green energy offsets to our utilities and like the Wisconsin grid that isn't 100% renewable. We're investing in 100% renewable energy to offset that greenhouse gas contribution. And so you can go to the next slide, which is going to talk about resilience, which is a little bit, like I said, of a broader concept. So here, you know, the resilience is basically the ability of a system or community to survive disruption and to anticipate and adapt and flourish and change. So when we're talking about resilience, we aren't talking about being really reactive to things that are happening. We're talking about being more proactive, and we're really thinking on a systems level and a community level, you know, socially, economically, environmentally, as well as how all those things work together. So you can go to the next slide, which is our project timeline. You can kind of see that we began our more public engagement with the campus and community this past spring semester, mostly kind of with our kickoff in February. But the planning to get here goes a lot farther back than that. I know Dave was involved with the School of Education for quite a while, even getting funding for my position. And again, with that idea of like leadership buy-in, it takes a while to build that momentum, get that buy-in. But I started contributing work on the plan back in fall, kind of behind the scenes, and then we've been more public since then. Our focus for this next year is, you know, even more engagement, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit in a later slide. So if you go to the next slide, our goal after we are engaging with people this upcoming fall and spring semester, we are having working groups, as well as just, you know, like other people that we're talking to, help us research projects and goals for the climate action plan. So we'll be writing the first draft of the climate action plan next summer. The things that our working groups will be helping us identify are projects and goals related to their area, as well as specific processes and steps, short, medium, long-term goals for the projects and goals that they've identified. We also want to be really careful that we are understanding what kind of datas and metrics we can use to measure progress on those goals, as well as making sure that we have a really clear idea of, you know, which operational area or individuals will be seen to be, you know, making sure that we are meeting these goals. We also are putting a huge emphasis on researching funding sources. There's a lot of grants out there right now for energy projects, as well as resilience projects. So we really want to be making sure that we're taking advantage of those as we can, and that's another thing that our working groups will be helping us with this next year. So to speak a little bit more about sort of how we'll be engaging with people next year, just want to flip my notes so I don't forget anyone. We did a couple of community events in Stevens Point. We did some tabling at Lovett Amphitheater, and we also did a public resilience assessment at the Portage County Library. In Marshfield and Wausau, we hope to get up in those communities, preferably at a, you know, library or another public setting here in the fall. We have attended, as the Office of Sustainability, plenty of campus events on our main campus, kind of promoting this project. We also have plans to be in Marshfield and Wausau early during their semesters in September, so making sure we get to our branch campuses as well. Obviously, today, we're talking to city council and you all, which we're really grateful for. We also want to get more in touch with the Portage County execs. On our campus, we'll be involved in our own governance, so with staff and faculty governance, as well as student governance. And we have been working a little bit with the Greater, the Great Lakes Inner Tribal Council, but we are hoping to get more involved with them. And kind of on that note of just the importance of engaging wide stakeholders, we're also writing a grant to hopefully maybe get somebody who can be more focused on stakeholder engagement and getting just like more diverse voices off there. Obviously, with like three communities essentially that are a part of UW-Stevens Point, we want to be really intentional about that as well. So for the last slide, like I said, we do have people on working groups already, but our working groups are by no means closed. So we would be happy to have anybody who may be interested in these kind of topics and just influencing the project and being part of the conversation to join us. And if you do want to get involved or just want to learn a little bit more about what that commitment might look like, you can send me an email. I think that Carrie has passed around my business cards. If not, you can definitely ask her for one. And then if you just want to kind of follow the project but maybe don't want to be involved, you can follow us on social media. We'll post updates from time to time and just kind of let you know how things are going. And we also have our web pages through the university. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Dave. And there are cards that were handed out to all of the alderpersons. If anyone from the public wishes information, it's available on the presentation tonight, or you can contact the clerk's office, and she can get you the contact information if you would like more. All righty. Back to where we are. Screen is not sharing. Yes, that's true. All right. Item number six is the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, we did have one person wishing to speak. Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor. Trevor Rourke, 601 Washington Avenue. Apologize for not finding time to make the committee meetings about this and share feedback to Parks Board, Plan Commissioner, Finance. But I did get a chance to meet with Director Kramer last week of the Parks Department, and I was grateful for his time. First, thank you, Director Kramer, for the open dialogue on this complicated topic. And the one I'm talking about is the purchase of property on Price Street. Sorry, my printer didn't print that. So whatever that address is. So it was good to get more background and details on some of the strategies here, some of which are not included in the Stevens Point Comprehensive Outdoor Rec Plan. I was able to watch the committee meetings, learn a little bit more as well, the recordings. But unfortunately, there was a lot of missing info and dialogue on the strategy. This is why I'm testifying on this subject today. I know it's too late to bring this back to committees and get more specific property discussions, a more robust discussion as well, but instead, I'm hoping that just to kind of place a bug in leadership ears right now when future opportunities come up. We really need a more robust public discussion on strategies like this. And the specific strategy is called strategic property acquisition, I believe, for the Parks Department, when it's basically abutting the specific park. So I do understand the desire to create an access driveway to the north for faster PD response times due to sometimes congested parking lots and access lanes surrounding the Boys and Girls Club and PJ Jacobs. I use that roughly twice a day in the summer, so I know it pretty well. Yet has the city, along with the Boys and Girls Club and PJ, reviewed any type of transportation demand management techniques first? These can be much lighter, quicker, and cheaper than buying up housing and laying down more pavement. We have a long history of overbuilding in this city. It's not unique to Stevens Point. A lot of this time is to meet some sort of transportation demand, but increasing that supply induces demand. In other words, the congestion problem comes back. It doesn't really solve the problem, and then we're stuck with that infrastructure. On the same subject, I'm very aware of the PD's surrounding parking lot was reconstructed roughly two to three years ago, since it was in bad condition. But this reconstruction was almost identical to what we see today. Before this project developed, it would have been super strategic to have had a much more robust discussion on this parking lot, looking at directly the strategic land to the north we're talking about right now, as well as traffic flow, daily and seasonal users, transportation demand and management techniques, reducing convection, which is basically reducing that heat island effect in parking lots. You feel like you're going to die in the middle of summer when you walk in a parking lot, that kind of thing. Adding little islands in the parking lot for trees to shade cars. I'm sure the PD would love shaded trees, parking needs, and more. To help with more rapid PD response, instead of buying property to the north, tearing down a house and paving a driveway, which is very expensive and destructive, the city could have carved out a little pullout lane on Michigan Avenue in front of the PD during parking lot reconstruction process. Again, years ago, was this idea ever discussed? Further, is it just me, or does anyone else think it's odd that these two multi-use paths that extend east-west end at a parking lot on the north side of the Grucci property? It's super weird. So if you're walking or biking there, it just ends. So where do the kids go? Where do the families go? Where do the police department workers go, staff go, if they're riding their bike to work? It's kind of weird. This could have all changed during that parking lot reconstruction. At Finance, it would have been nice to see some estimated costs on houses marked for strategic acquisition. How much would it cost? And I'm not just talking about the one house, right? More of all the houses that are on the plan. How much would it cost to demolish or relocate one of the houses or all the houses? Could money be better spent on things like remodeling the pool, like I talked with Director Kramer about, or expanding it into some sort of big aquatics facility? Were the housing maintenance and property maintenance estimated as well? I just found it odd that a lot of numbers like this were missing for that conversation. There's a lot more to talk about. So and also, as we evolve as a city and actually start robust conversations surrounding climate change mitigation and building resilience, case in point, to stronger storms and more extreme heat, we should quantify how much additional carbon actually gets put in the atmosphere when we do things like destroying housing and putting down pavement. Since these actions have very negative effect on economies globally and locally, they should really be part of that conversation as well. Last but not least, we seem to talk about affordable housing and missing middle housing a lot, but this is kind of antithetical to that. So I thought that was kind of odd, too. So I hope in this next comprehensive plan study and thing going on pretty soon, I hope it's a more of a systems approach, more people are involved, and it's more transparent. In the meantime, if this does come up before that comp plan, I hope the bug in the ear I presented tonight helps develop a larger discussion on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thoughts, comments, or motion?
Motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion, Mayor? Additional comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Nivone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number seven is a resolution, a request from Zach Brock and representing the North Reserve Property Group, LLC, for a conditional use permit to construct more than one duplex on an unaddressed parcel bounded by Reserve Street North, consistent with the chapters identified in your packet, also with the parcel identified in your packet.
Motion so moved.
Motion to approve. Alderperson, thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Shuda. Discussion?
This is in my area. I'd like, I'd like to do, I'd like to say thank you to Zach for going out to, for all the work he did with Harmony Village. He reached, he reached out to the area there, talked with them, was able to work things out to get something that everybody was really, that everybody was really happy with. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Nivone.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number eight is an ordinance amendment, a request from the City of Stevens Point to amend the official street map of the City of Stevens Point, establishing Evelyn Court, Joe Street, Leonard Street, and Lost Creek Road within lots 1 through 60 with the parcels identified in your packet of the New Forest Creek subdivision. Alder Nivone.
I will move to approve the ordinance amending the revised municipal code of the City of Stevens Point to represent these streets as listed.
The official street map?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Burr. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. One more roll call, please.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Nivone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number nine is a resolution that's authorization to apply for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Idol Sites Redevelopment Grant for the Oaks Affordable Housing Project.
Will of approval?
I'm sorry, who was that? Lang?
Sure.
Moved by Lang, seconded by Keimer. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing none. Clerk, could I get a roll call, please?
Morrow.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 10 is a request to modify a limited-term employee's electrical inspector's salary. This is kind of an anomaly when we, we had a plumbing inspector and our inspection superintendent was able to do electrical inspections because of the certifications. When he left and the plumbing inspector was then moved into that job, that left us with a vacancy as, for an electrical inspector. That becomes very challenging because that kind of screeches any construction to a halt. So we did a limited-term employee until we could get approval to hire. We sent the job description over to Baker Tilly, who evaluates all of our job descriptions and gives us a scoring system, which then equates to a grade on our pay plan. It came back as G, and I think that, yeah, that's outlined in manager Frosch's memo. And when we questioned it, Baker Tilly then realized that they made a mistake in that determination, reevaluated it, and it's coming back as grade J, which is a slight increase. We have already been paying the LTE the grade G. So what we are seeking is making the correction and allowing grade J step one, which is $34.90 an hour. And to correct that error, we asked that we are able to retroactively compensate the limited-term employee electrical inspector effective from his date of start, which was July 9.
Move to approve.
I'm sorry, who was that? Burr?
Me.
Okay. And seconded by Lang. Discussion?
Seems fair.
It absolutely is. And we have, the job is posted, and it is posted at a grade J. So the limited-term employee will just retroactively be paid what the grade was supposed to be. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Marl.
Aye.
And that is approved. On page 56 of your packet, you will find an ordinance amendment for Chapter 9, 9.05, as it relates to parking. I think this is a monthly agenda item, because we're always finding things or making modifications where things don't exactly jive or adding some additional stuff. But this was through committee last week. What are your thoughts?
Move to approve.
Keemer moves to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Lang. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, could you please call that roll?
Marl.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that one is approved. Item number 12 is on page 57 of your packet, and that is to award the 2024 Pavement Maintenance Program Project 24-04 to Farner Asphalt Sealers, LLC out of Plover in an amount not to exceed $281,744 and 25 cents.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Marl.
I'll second.
Seconded by Christensen. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Oh, sorry.
It's one of those where there's not a lot of competition, but there's nothing we can control. So it's frustrating, but it's the way it is.
Get those potholes.
Alright, clerk, would you please call that roll?
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Marl.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing a referendum for the City of Stevens Point to hire additional fire department personnel. As you know, we've been talking about this for a while. We've had a presentation from the chief. We now have to approve the wording so it can make the November ballot, and I will turn it over to the comptroller-treasurer to give us the lowdown on that.
Yes. So I was able to finalize the wording with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue on Friday, and the correct wording did make the packet. One major change from what was approved at Finance Committee is I have a different definition of total, as opposed to how the Department of Revenue defines total. So with the total increase, I had that listed as 9.7, because that would be the total increase with both what we were already planning to increase the levy going into 2025, and then plus the referendum. The Department of Revenue interprets that to be just the referendum-specific percentage. So that's, the question that people are going to see on the ballot is a total increase of 4.864, which obviously, in some ways, that helps the referendum question. The only problem is, when people get their tax bills, we do have to disclose the percentage that their city taxes have changed, and that number that they're going to see on their tax bills is 9.7. So I did express some of those concerns to the Department of Revenue, and basically what they said is, well, you have to word the question this way. You don't have a choice. But it's up to you how you want to reach out to the community to communicate any other information that you feel is relevant, so that people can make an informed decision on the referendum. So that's what I would recommend. Obviously, I recommend passing this because it's, you know, we have to go with the Department of Revenue's wording of the question, but just something to, you know, be aware of, that we are going to have to think about how we reach out to the community so that people don't feel deceived when they get their tax bill, and their increase, instead of being 4.8%, is 9.7%.
Okay. Any immediate questions for the comptroller-treasurer?
No, I just want to thank him for doing such a thorough job in all of this, making sure we're getting it right.
Yeah, we already talked today about how we're going to do community outreach to inform them, to make sure that they have accurate information. We have access to our TV station, our radio station, and of course, all of our media outlets. So we'll be working on that over the next several weeks. Chief, did you have something to add?
I was just going to piggyback on what you had to say.
Feel free.
So with that, as the mayor was just saying, to piggyback on what the mayor and the comptroller had said, how are we going to inform the citizens of Stevens Point? You know, the difference between the eight-point, or sorry, the 4.864% versus the 9.7, there's going to be some upcoming forums with the chief, just like I did in February when I came forward in front of the council, to explain the situation for the referendum. In October, there's going to be, we're going to start in, obviously, September. There's going to be some mailers that go out through our local. There's going to be lit drops. There's going to be, we've already set aside this room to actually have open forums with the chief. I'm going to do some during the day, some in the evenings, to be able to catch everyone, day or night, and give those presentations again. And I talked with the comptroller and the mayor, and I'm planning on putting a slide in and explaining this within my referendum presentation. That way, we're completely transparent, and we're explaining everything right away upfront. So that is the plan as we move forward.
Thank you very much, chief. And as most of you probably know, the law prohibits us from encouraging people to vote one way or the other. We are only allowed to provide information. So we want to make sure that the information that the public gets is as accurate as possible, so the rumors get squashed quickly if there are any, and they have a resource to get their questions answered. With that, thoughts, comments, or a motion?
I would move approval of the referendum question.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Burr. Discussion?
Yes.
One of the reasons why I live in the City of Stevens Point and not in a rural area is for all the amenities that the city provides, and I pay for those amenities to my tax dollars. In my mind, this resolution is worth passing. When you call 911, you want to make sure somebody's there to respond. So I won't tell, I don't intend to tell people how to vote, but seriously, think about what this resolution means when you go to the polls in November.
Thank you. Yes?
I thought the City of Stevens Point School District did such a nice job putting together their slides that were very fact-based and visual when they went to referendum, and how they amplified those in different venues. I'm so glad to hear that the fire department, in partnership with our media division, will be putting together said visuals and talking points. That's excellent. When we, as elected officials, receive those types of questions, I wonder if you'd like us to use those ourselves, or if you would like and prefer that those questions be referred to your department?
Good question.
So a little bit of both. And I just wanted to clarify on a few things. Like the mayor said, as a city, as a part of the management staff and the chief of the department, I can't tell the city how to vote on this referendum. All I can do is provide the information and allow them to make that informed decision. The local, however, Local 484, the union within the department, will be out doing lit drops. They will be doing mailers. They will be doing some robo-texts as, as time gets closer to that election time. Again, I'll be doing a mayor's minute with the mayor. I'll be doing some actual open forums as the chief within this room and doing that presentation again. For talking points, since we just got the actual numbers this last week, prior to that, we had talking points that anybody, any of the elders who wanted those talking points, I had laminated cards with all of the talking points and the key reasons why we were going to referendum. There are going to be a few minor changes because of the language and what we had to, I guess, agree to. But those talking points are going to be put together by the end of the week, and I should have those talking points out to all of you on laminated cards. So if somebody approaches you in the public, you'll have the answers. If you don't have the answers on those talking points, please refer them to me or someone within my staff, and we'd be more than willing to answer any questions they may have.
And just for clarification, the Local 484 Union has their own political action committee, which are not bound by the same rules that the city is. They can be politically active.
Correct.
Right. Thank you, chief.
Anything else? Alright, thank you.
Great. The motion before you is to approve the referendum wording of the resolution. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And the clerk will call that roll.
Marl.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Marl.
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session.
So.
Alderpersons, President Christensen.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve and offer to purchase for 601 Main Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll give a second to Guthrie. I'm sorry, she had her hand up before you spoke. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Because there will be. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Marl.
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session.
So.
Alderpersons, President Christensen.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve and offer to purchase for 601 Main Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll give a second to Guthrie. I'm sorry, she had her hand up before you spoke. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Because there will be. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Marl.
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session.
So.
Alderpersons, President Christensen.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve and offer to purchase for 601 Main Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll give a second to Guthrie. I'm sorry, she had her hand up before you spoke. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Because there will be. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk,